Waiting for Jen, I think.
Okay, well, we can continue.
She's a huge part of that. She's a huge, yeah, she's a huge part of this. I'm only have.
Do I need any of my cheat sheets from the last few times? Or did I left them in my office? Probably not.
I don't think so.
While we're waiting, did you gentlemen get the email yesterday about Jamie Herrera dollars?
Yeah.
Bridge?
Yeah.
We want to have that discussion while we're sitting.
Yeah, we can.
Um, yeah. I mean, discussion as far as I'm concerned, I can't see anything else that money is going through in our county, so heck, yeah.
So I talked with Gordy Sanover on the list. Um, for what we have and the bridge dollars are number one that we have for that list. So we've kind of already got it in at a big list, but we want to put it in as this is what we want. And then at our bridge meeting, we said, you know, the Oregon delegation is going to put in for their side and maybe put in five million. We might put in five million, we may end up getting five million totally.
Yes.
But that five million will go a long ways into case two and three design.
Yeah, I, I think the way I would have been reading that transportation package. Everybody looks at the giant dollars that are being given and I don't think they're. I think people are going to be surprised at the end of it, how little of it is on bridges and roads, so. But yeah, take what we can get. It's going to be a small percentage of the total dollar.
And, and this, and so that, that isn't, that's part of the FAST dollars. So that's like the bringing back field earmarks in that, uh, which we're not allowed to do. But the, the big project, you know, the build back better project, you know, what, what they're, they're sloshing around right now. That's going to be a much bigger ask, probably seventy-five to a hundred and twenty million dollar ask in that. Which if we can get that, we're, we're, we're move making real progress here.
I was gonna say, yeah, something that seemed like a pipe dream that would never happen actually has possibilities happening. That's because of free Chinese COVID money.
Is, uh, and the, the mayor is supporting.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm, okay, it's good.
You're gonna ask for, uh, as big a number as you can, or are you gonna set on five million or something?
Well, I think, isn't the, if I recall, the, the kind of idea is that each representative's earmark is somewhere around twenty.
Fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty, and so we don't want to.
And she's got four counties, so.
It's just seven, actually, and so let's not, we're already hogging up more than our share.
We're better than.
Well, I, you're not gonna get any, uh, argument for me on that. All twenty should come here, so, but.
We need our votes next time, so they might come here.
Well, there's a lot more voters in the other, I can think of one county in particular.
Yeah, but I don't think the other county's voters are pissed off at these.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I, your, I. Yeah.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
Censured.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome.
Yeah, I would say shoot for the biggest number you can get and take what you can get.
Okay, I'll send that email in.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Whenever, we're, we're getting.
Take your, take your time.
We get it all figured out.
That works all out.
Um, so I did send out a handout that was several pages, but I did bring a couple of printed copies. I wasn't bringing them for everybody, so if somebody wants one, I have some. If you don't.
I will take a print if you got one. I'm one of those people that like to look at paper, but I like it electronically, so if I want to find it later, I don't have to dig through the stuff.
And I, I did, I at least been training, I tried to do the B O C C thing, did anybody else? So, uh, continuing on our journey, um, today, we were going to go through, um, kind of Jen's, uh, and, and Jen's gonna be kind of the leader, I think, of taking us through her.
She's like.
Yeah. She's, we're going, she's gone through and put together, we went through the, the visual part of her piece, I think, in the very first, uh, session we kind of had. And now we are, uh, she's kind of gone through and broke it into a spreadsheet, which is, uh, fund by fund by fund with. What it's for, if it has restrictions, uh, minimum balances, uh, it's a lot of information, so it's hard to. So it's hard to get it all, but it, she's got it all on one sheet, and I think it's something that I know as the treasurer, when I got here, this would have been great. I mean, it, we, it's all everywhere, but we're trying to compile it into one area, I think. Um, so, anyway, so our thought was we would go through these, um, and then my sheet that I handed out is what we call the County Treasurer's Report, or a bank statement, if you will. And, um, we, we, this is cash, strictly cash. I went out and one of the things that we get, um, kind of a little bit before we get started, because there's some different. There's fund balance and there's the cash balance. Um, I went out to try to do a, to try to put together a, something to kind of hand out, but I couldn't really find anything. Uh, because if you go through and search the cash bars manual that's provided by the state auditor, uh, fund balance shows up in there two times. Because it's a, it's cash, it doesn't have, there is no ask, there's no live, there's no, uh, balance sheet in a cash, uh, state audit report. It's all revenues and expenses and cash balance, that's all it is. But we have, um, fund balances and we use the term kind of around the county, because we do have them in our, because we are what we, we're somewhat of a hybrid, uh, model. So, um, so the numbers are kind of interesting in, in how they are. We function in the treasurer's office, we are cash, we, I mean, it's all great to have all the other pieces, but we go by the cash balance and that's the number.
What is the difference between cash balance and fund balance?
The, basically, the fund balance would be is if you had a balance sheet, you would be able to, you'd be able to reserve dollars against that. And so you'd have a liability of some sort that would go on your balance sheet, because you're.
So the cash balance is what's actually in that account, and the funds balance is, might be a lesser number, because you earmarked something for something like.
Yes, but we can't really do that in being a, a cash county. That's kind of my point, is that when you go through and, and Heather and Brenda can talk to this a lot more, but when we get through to doing the reporting to the state, we're not, we don't have fund balances. We have cash balances and we provide them those numbers. So they're not in the number, you know, there's no real place to find them, but the, yeah, a fund balance would be if we reserve some amount, or there's a restricted amount in there, and there's, there's numbers that go in there.
They're gonna show a fund balance that's seven hundred thousand less because of a building.
Potentially.
It really is.
Yeah, and, and not even a, but yeah, there was some other kind of form. In our world, what we do with those, and sometimes what we've done in the past, is we have to set up a new fund to manage those dollars, so that it has cash and they're separated from there. You can't, you can't have restricted balance, I mean, you can have restricted balances, but you can't have a set aside, because we have no balance sheet. We are a cash county, so we have no liabilities or no, I mean, we have cash and that's it. So, so in going through there, I guess the challenge was, there's really nothing out there to try to compare the two, because a fund balance is a term from GAAP accounting. And a cash basis, um, term is, then cash basis accounting is designated and controlled by the state auditor, and they're the ones who write the rules and so on and so forth. I think we are finding more, and I'm a little out of my league here, because I just deal with cash, this is more of an accounting, um, you know, auditor kind of thing. But as we see the state auditor doing different rules and regulations within the cash accounting, they are referring to GAAP a little bit more than they have in the past. So there is some, th- those are good things, but that still doesn't mean we don't have a balance sheet, I mean, we don't have all that. We have revenues and expenses and we have a cash balance, and that's what this report represents. So if this report is somewhat different, or there's an amount, or maybe it's twenty thousand dollars off, we could go figure that out, because I know in the past Glenn had fund balance reports, and they were very, very, they're, they're really close on it, almost same on some stuff, but there's some where maybe they weren't a hundred percent. And there was maybe, uh, an amount, and that was because we had some fund balance difference of the two, and we can go through that. But I just want to preface this with that, and we'll go through and figure those out, but there is a little bit of difference. So this is actually the balance to the bank that we have, and everything balances. I've only printed you out through five hundred, this goes on to seven hundred from there, because of all the special purpose districts and everything. But we're really gonna focus on only the county today. Yes.
It's good, lost my thought, or no, I know what I was thinking of. The difference between cash and fund bound, I mean, the kind of the way I manage it in my own head is the. Cash is cash, it's the, it's, it's no different than the checkbook. We have all these fund balances, if we have categories of things that we're gonna spend money on, we have allotted, so we've reserved for budgeting purposes. You know, if I have, you know, a thousand dollars in my checking account, that's, that's the cash balance. But I know, oh, I've already planned on a hundred's gonna go for my car payment, two fifty's gonna go for my mortgage payment. And so that's the fund balance is what I've set in each, but it really is incorporated into that total cash number.
Yeah.
Is, I mean, is that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it all does come in there, but it's just, there is no real fun in, in.
No, no.
Cash accounting, there's no word.
That's my own.
Fund balance is what rolls over at the beginning of the year in the cash, that's the fund balance, that's the only number. So that's where it kind of, that's, and that comes back to, and we are unique in this hybrid model that we have. I mean, I, I've talked to a lot of counties and.
We love you.
Yes, we are unique.
We may eventually get to be less unique.
I wouldn't do that. I don't think there'd be, yeah.
Yeah.
So go ahead.
Okay, so the papers that you have in front of me, the first one you've seen before, um, we went over that last time, I just included it here in case you didn't have it on hand. Second one, you would ask for, uh, visuals as to how, like which departments, um, were controlling which funds. So there, I've given you two different visuals for that. Um, second one is a copy of the first with kind of tags on the outside of it. The third, um, has a breakdown of the general fund at top of which departments are within the general fund. And then those departments that have multiple funds are below that, and then the funds, um, that they're responsible for.
Can you remind me the, on your second one with the, uh, so you've got, you know, three, and it says auditor and seven, and it says B O C C. Is that referring to, why is, why is WSU a one and the accessories?
Those are the department numbers.
And are those set in bars, or is that just some, we randomly assigned those numbers?
I'm assuming we ran.
I'm assuming that we assigned.
Years before we got here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good, I don't know, I, because I'm often wondering.
Lock and chisel.
Why are we a seven?
I had the answer to that at one point, as to how it came.
Just because.
I always find it so.
There was some alphabetical logic in some ways.
Some alphabetical logic that we went with the W and.
That's, that's what I get, that's what I, I've always struggled about that, because.
Okay, I, I just wondered if there was some overarching logical reason why those numbers.
At some point in time.
Okay.
And.
Well, and you'll.
So when the Romans set up our financial system.
Forty years from now, they're gonna go, wait, forty years from now, they're gonna question this.
And so I pulled my data straight, um, directly from Cuyahoga, so there'll be a couple more things that you see, like under B O C C department. Um, Fund One Thirty Three Affordable Housing comes up. On the third page, it's under both, because Cuyahoga actually has One Thirty Three as, um, a B O C C department. But I know that it falls under economic development, so I have them in both locations, because I wasn't sure exactly why it was coded under B O C C.
It needs to be under B O C C.
So I left it, just because I didn't have the knowledge.
Of course, I like to think that all funds are under B O C C.
Budgetary purposes, you're probably correct.
And then the last.
Do I hear, do I hear Brenda's? I think that's. She said Heather.
Um, the last, I believe, three pages.
In the building at the moment. Your say.
Yeah, okay, thank you. At least for a little while.
The last three pages is, um, the nuts and bolts of each fund. What S A O, um, has directed for each type of funds, um, what fund, what it is, which department it falls under, any R C W's, what, um, codes, resolutions that apply to those funds that I could find, um, where the revenues generate from, and if there was a minimum balance, um, those are there, and any restriction notes that I could find.
I have a question, should V R and R be on here as well, or is that, is it excluded for some reason?
V R and R?
Yeah.
It's under the five hundred, I believe.
Oh, I didn't see it, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there it is.
It is five oh two. I don't believe, I might have missed it on the third graph, but.
And did you have to, did you, were you able to pull this from Cuyahoga, this is in Cuyahoga, or?
No.
To build this yourself?
I had to build this. I was, I was able to, yeah, I was able to pull the fund, sub-fund and the description of the fund, straight from Cuyahoga, that's why there's parentheses around them, because that's just how Cuyahoga has it configured, but, um, the rest of it, I had to build.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a great document, honestly, it's, yes, and having it on one sheet, being able to look at it, it's been, Jen's done some great work here. So I, we, so we were just gonna start at the top and go to, were there any questions, I guess, with the charts that Jen had put together with the different departments or anything, or if they come about, we can go back to them? We were just planning on going down through this list, fund by fund, as fun as that sounds. Um, so. We, yeah, starting with W.
I think we need one of those wheels that we.
Yeah, there you go. Let's talk about this one.
Let's talk about this one.
Um, so current expense, um, and I'll let Jen go through the different pieces that she has on here, and then we can go through the treasurer's report as it relates to that.
Um, S A O notes for the current expenses, um, the general fund current expense account should be used to account for all, for and report all financial resources, not accounted for and reported in another fund. For reporting purposes, the local government can have only one, although a local government has to report on, only one general fund and its external financial reports. The government can have multiple general sub-funds for its internal managerial purposes. These managerial sub-funds have to be combined into one general fund for external financial reporting.
So basically, what that means is when we file the annual report, we roll up the custodial fund numbers and some of our, um, like the law library, no, that's a separate, there are some other little.
There are some one hundred bucks.
Because they're not large enough to, to.
Have their own, stand on their own.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, and so it does have a minimum balance of one point two million, or one point two five, excuse me. And the treasurer's report is, this is a view of March only. So for example, in, um, the current expense of March, uh, we started with the balance of two million, we had receipts for taxes or other things of seven hundred and ninety-four thousand. Um, netted transactions are where we actually booked a revenue to an expense, so the, the auditor doesn't like that, that, well, they, not that they don't like it, but typically in your bank account, anything that's a deposit should be a revenue. So they want you to tell them why you're booking a revenue, a, a deposit to an expense bars. For example, if you used your corp, uh, company card and pers- purchased, um, this is probably a bad example, but it's an easy one. Um, you use your company card to purchase something personally, and you have to pay the county back for that, we have to pay, we have to deposit your check into a five account, because we're gonna expense that out. And so we have to place that in there, so that would end up in something like that.
So if that happens, hopefully that happens accidentally.
Oh, yeah. It's, I, I don't think it's, it's never, it's, but I mean, it's, a lot of times, I think nowadays with the way the cards are stored, maybe if somebody's ordering on Amazon or something.
Say, I grabbed it once in a while, my oops, wrong one.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure it's not a.
No, no, it's, I, I, I've had two in my whole career, they, in my examples were, I was traveling and it was like they put my, my food, my meal on the hotel, you know, and they discharged it all, which we don't do that. Because we do per diem or we get reimbursement, and so I had to write a check to the county.
Right.
To reimburse my meal that they charged in my hotel room, which I then submitted for my meal reimbursement. It was more really more of an accounting, it wasn't, but it wasn't, it was, it was outside of policy, you can't.
Right, and so like in that situation, we would have had to take your money and deposit it to an expense bars number, and so that's what's captured in that netted transaction.
Generally, refund is because we've gotten a true refund for something that's an overpayment.
Insurance is one that happens, so, like at the end, if we get a re, uh, uh, if we, if our premium was too much, and so we got a refund on insurance or something like that, we'd have.
Okay.
So the minimum balance of one point two five, is that based on internal policies, is that based on auditor's recommendation, where's that one come from?
I think.
That's, that's an internal resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of that.
We've adjusted that before.
The state auditor.
Balances are internal resolutions.
Okay, the state auditor or, or the state, you know, there's no, nobody says you have to have this much, and that's all our, our choosing. Um, and so then, uh, we had some journal entries that were in there this month, and then we had expenses of one point three million, and some E transactions would be if we pay excise tax electronically or something like that. So we ended the, we had one point three million of expenses, and our ending cash balance is one point four million dollars. Um, that is in March, always ends about there, because we're about ready to start to pick up our taxes. So if we went and looked at this in April, even though, yeah, our minimum balance is one point two, we're, we're in a turn, we're now going to start going the other way, and, and so, you know, that's not a concern. That's why I just want to make sure it's not like we're headed to, we don't need to address that, that's gonna be addressed by tax payments.
This is our, this is our leanest.
Yeah, yeah, March is, yeah, March is a dry, dry season in the treasurer's office. Um.
Get on that, Greg.
So, um, so anyway, so this would be for this fund, this is where we're at, and this is where it would end at, and these dollars and everything in there relate to all of these departments and everything that are on the top part, and that's everything that's flowing through that fund. Any questions on that? Okay.
The one hundreds are special revenue funds, um, S A O notes say that these should be used to account for and report the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are restricted or committed to expenditure for specific purposes other than debt services and capital projects, when elaborate.
I have a quickie question on that, all these one hundred funds, do they each, do each one of these funds have their own, let's call it bank account? Or is it all just one thing, and we're just, have our own little earmark section that we know?
I'd kind of like to think of the funds as separate bank accounts.
They are separate bank accounts defined right here, but every dollar in the county for every district is managed through two bank accounts. Uh, through two cash bank accounts, we have other bank accounts that we have set up to do other types of transactions, but that's why the treasurer's report is, uh, it's, it's, it's kind of like my document, because we actually reconcile this to the, the, this is this sheet to the bank. So if somebody, you know, is looking in Cuyahoga, we, we can only do that really every month, we can't do it during every day, I mean, we do, we reconcile every day, but really at the end of the month is when all the things come together, we do our final reconciliation, everything, so.
So we have two bank accounts, but I should probably think of these as individuals.
I think of each one, then that's exactly what I do, and I think of each one of these as their own bank statement. So every, every column, you know, and on that Fund One, that's their bank statement, they had that many expenditures and that many revenues, and we can go through and tick all those off, so, yeah.
Because these in reality can, these, every one of these are, that you can't mix the mon, like the money, the pool of money you're dealing with, but I can't take, um, you know, flood control money and, or I can't take auditor's O and M money and spend it on something else.
Right, well, you can, you just think, well.
Well, first, I can't.
You might just.
I can't even get to the try part.
So what about all our seven hundred funds, all our special purpose district dollars, are those in those two check, checking accounts as well, so it's all that together?
Okay, which is why in the last six years since I've been the treasurer, the state auditor has a bigger grab now, and so we give them more and more information of all these funds. When I first been in the treasurer, we just focused on the five hundred funds and balancing these pieces and those. Now they want every piece of information that we have for every one of those districts, and now they're going out, and that's what we are working with the districts on, is making sure that all of our records are, are, not that they weren't reconciling before, but that, you know, because they're having this database, they keep track of all these pieces. And that is a huge difference in the last six years, um, reports have changed, um, so much has changed, and really, there's been a lot of change in banking, just in general. I would say the banking industry has really, you know, o- over the last ten, sure, but, I mean, we came across the file the other day, we're in the treasurer's office, they used to call the eight hundred number and punch in the bank account number to get the balance every morning, and, you know, and now we have access to that all day long on that, on that.
So now let's, let's say like cemetery district or something, special purpose district over there, they're doing their own accounting, you type stuff, but you're in charge of overseeing that to make sure that they're not screwing up?
No, technically, we're just their bank, I mean, or their treasurer, um, they are to pass their own resolutions, they are to authorize their own expenditures. So their expenditures come to the auditor's office and get cut, just like that, we issue all warrants, so the treasurer is responsible for all revenue, or all revenues and disbursements, or deposits and disbursements.
Being the banker for them and not having any oversight on how they conduct their.
Yeah, essentially, unless there was something unlawful, then we would then report it, we would.
That's where I was leading, is your, your oversight is to make sure they're not screwing up, but.
Right, that there's not like some wire that's getting sent to some Swedish offshore bank account or something.
And their commissioners, the special purpose districts, their commissioners do the same thing like you guys do with county bills. And so it does go through an audit process in our office, because we are cutting the checks, so if we flag something, it's, you know, the.
Okay. Because that's what I was looking for, are we flagging things that we?
Yeah, and that goes then to the auditor, because they're auditing it, and we're managing the cash balance.
Right, but they're auditing on behalf of their elected board of commissioners for our special purpose districts, not for us.
Right.
You're doing that function for us, the things that belong to us.
Yes, and that's a way more intensive audit when it's internal to the county. Um, we require that you provide backup documentation that we don't require for the special purpose districts, because they are really in charge of, of their own finances, we're just simply administering the checks, but we are paying attention to whether or not, you know, they're, they're hitting, say, fire two is hitting fire three's fund, because they mistyped the number, or there's some, you know, payment to something that clearly looks like it's out of whack, so.
So do you have any, do you do all the A P for all the special districts, or can, do some do their own, can they do their own?
Rural Seven does its own.
There's a minimum balance of, on fire districts, of how much you have to have to do your own.
Like, if you have a certain, if you're at a certain level, then you're.
You could do your own if you chose.
If you chose to, and I assume we do it, we, there's, well, I know the answer, is, we're already paying for it as, uh, just general government. So you charge the districts.
We do charge the districts.
Oh, you, I did not know that.
Um, the districts get charged fifty cents in invoice.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't cover postage.
That's. Seems a little.
But it's been that way for, uh, certainly as long as I've been here.
Okay.
So there, there is a.
Probably not wasted.
Charge.
Okay.
For fifteen cents.
Yeah, right, and see, like the treasurer's office, our fees are kind of covered in, have been covered in penalties and interest, which is, goes to the county general fund, so on all taxes, so when you look, that's kind of why in my budget, I always provide how much money we're getting for penalties and interest, and where my budget is, and those, I don't want to say they're the same, but they're, you know, it is an offset of some of that, so it's one of the reasons why I'm, so, um, the penalties and interesting is such a.
Right.
Piece, because then, you know, we are, I think that, that is a good point, that the tre- the auditor's office and the treasurer's office, we are doing work, we're elected by the county, and we are doing work for all the districts in the county, you know, a lot of, not just the under five hundred funds.
Right.
Okay. Great questions.
Do you want to dive into each fund, or?
Yeah, I think we, I mean, we might as well just kind of go through them, and if they get, I mean, I think we should, at least, yeah.
Okay, the notes on the far right are specific to the fund, under the special revenue funds. So, um, the road fund, of course, is restricted, um, and it has, um, reporting requirements through, uh, WASD or CRAB. Um, they have a couple of R C Ws that, um, pertain to that, and do you want to talk about the revenues, or?
I, I was just, I mean, it's in here, and I think if you guys have questions, the, the, the current county road fund balance in, um, March was four point eight million, and, uh, so, uh, we'll just go through, you guys have both pieces to look at, I think, if you have questions.
Can I object one?
Yeah.
Just because revenues and expenditures in this, kind of this, this checking account reconciliation, you have to look at it like if you got, you were reconciling your own checkbook, that if you've got any outstanding checks, the bank isn't aware of them, because the way that the Cuyahoga system hits, when we put in an invoice, it's triggered by the invoice date, and we just got that question the other day from a junior district, that if I put in a March invoice, but don't pay it until April, it doesn't, in the system, it's an expenditure in March.
Oh, when you write the check.
Right, when you. Right, when you write the check.
When the check.
But it doesn't hit the cash balance until it actually clears.
No, no, that's not true.
With the warrant register date, right, is that when you're hitting the?
We're hitting the cash whatever day you guys put in there for the period.
Yeah, I think it hits the warrant register date because that's the actual issue date, but Kianta on the budget side is hitting it. So if the, um, if the invoice date was March thirty first, but the check run date was April.
Yeah, we don't care about what the invoice date is, we care about when the check dated. So if we had the check with thirty thirty one, we pull the, the Kianta actually does this all for it. It pulls it from the sub funds and puts it into two funds that are this, that are the AP clearing and payroll clearing. And it sits out there, so none of these, that the whole float of checks is not handled within the funds itself. The funds, once they issue a check, the cash leaves their fund.
Right, but it'll. But the budget hit for the invoice is the date of the invoice. So sometimes there's an overlap between months because you wrote the check, you know, July thirty first, but it wasn't cashed until August first, there's a, every once in a while there's an overlap.
Okay, I, I don't, I didn't realize, I, yeah, I guess I didn't realize that. That seems odd to me, but, but it's absolutely, that's what it does.
Okay, that sounds like more of this.
I mean, it's.
The good part to understand is, is so if you're a junior taxing district, you know, it's coming off of this, you know, because you might like as a junior taxing district, you put in your AP on the twenty fifth, but it shows up on your fund balance the next month. And then it moves from, from yours to AP clearing and then out. But the money's still in the cat, in the bank account until they deposit that check.
No, the, the, once a check is cut by the auditor's office, let's say that the road fund writes a check for one twenty two million dollars and they date it today, that, that money will flow from there. So that comes out of the, the individual funds. We have two funds that aren't listed on here that are six hundred funds that are six thirty three and six thirty six, which are all of the uncleared checks. And those, so no, no fund is allowed to run, that's why if you go down below there, these ones all under warrants, they don't have any warrants issued or outstanding. And that's why their cash balance is what it is because they're not issuing. If we had fire district seven, for example, they would have a previous month's outstanding balance and that. But they have to maintain in their fund balance that cash, they can't invest that and can't, they can't play the float. They have to assume that once the check is sent in mail, it's redeemed in theory.
What I'm saying is those budget reports that Brenda sends out every month, if the invoice was dated March thirty first, but the check was cut today, it's reflected in the cash today because that's when you get the information, but in the budget reports, it's reflected for the month. So sometimes we, we have to look at both pieces to truly get an understanding of what the financial picture of a fund.
So just for curiosity. So when the AP goes, are processed, the money immediately goes for, you pull all the money from all the different funds to, and it goes into the clearing fund.
Clearing fund.
And it's sitting and it may sit there, that actually sits there until those checks come through.
And the balance of that fund is exactly your outstanding balance of checks.
Okay. Are you allowed to invest that money?
Well, I mean, in.
Cause it could be a lot of money.
Theory, we are investing it because we're investing the county residual.
Okay, and then that's where that is incorporated, I mean.
I mean, that would be part of your, that would be, there would be an amount, but yes, that is.
Okay.
That's where the float of is all happening is in there in your county residual dollars.
Okay, all right, let's, let's get out of the weeds, let's get out of the weeds.
No, no, you're fine, I think.
I mean.
So funds.
I like this discussion because I can read this in my leisure.
Yeah, that's true.
My question.
Yeah, cause again, I have questions and it's like, I don't, I don't know how that works.
No, and I think this is good, I think this is, it's good to talk about. And like I say, it is different once you get outside of the county because, and we didn't bring any of those from other districts. But I mean, it all is in the, where it's at, so.
Uh, five one oh three is the G I S fund, Public Works manages that fund. It has a two twenty thousand dollar minimum balance and it's for the computer mapping system. One oh four senior services, uh, there's an R C W related to that, um, its revenue sources are grants, landfill, state service programs, United Way, they have a minimum balance of a hundred thousand dollars and it's for provisions of transport, transportation and progress to the elderly and disabled. They have grant specific restrictions, each grant comes with its own special set of rules and reporting requirements. One oh four.
So a question, um, so our minimum balances are internal.
Yes.
And if you roll below that minimum balance, uh, cause you could do it because you just had to pay the darn bills and you're waiting on the money to come in. Well, does the state auditor know that we have minimum balances on each fund and will they see it? And then will they flag it if we go below that minimum balance?
Does, a potential, yes.
That is a potential, okay.
And so we had this happen with, um, emergency management, I believe, not skipping ahead, but fund one twenty is a one twenty seven. Anyway, they have a, and, and it was literally just a timing issue of the dollars. And I think that's one of the reasons why we added them, these balances on here, because I think we do need to revisit that at some point in time and we're gonna kind of stick that on a parking lot item of why, because as we're going to, and I think this is where the minimum balance thing came from, is is that we, we, we do allocate directly landfill dollars into some of these funds. And so I think the point was, we wanted to make sure that they were managing their dollars. But on the other hand, we have, you know, you have a fund that has, like, for example, let's say that we allocate the dollars for the, for the landfill to senior services fund one oh four. Once it's really in one oh four, it's really difficult to get it back to some other fund, which is kind of back to the conversation we've had about making sure that we get dollars into one twenty five, if, if possible, or, you know, leveling everything back out because those minimum balances and those balances of where the things are at. So I think that what was happening is, is they were trying to set the minimum balances so that we were doing our revenues and getting our grant dollars back and everything was, the cash flow was working. Sometimes we can trip on those minimum balances, our, I mean, where there's a legitimate reason. And so then that gets us some risk to the auditor because we got, I mean, the auditor doesn't tell us we have to have a minimum balance on anything, we're doing it. But then if we don't follow our own process, then that's where we get in trouble.
That's the problem.
I do believe that the resolution's verbiage does allow for you to dip below that. There was something in there regarding, um, I don't remember verbatim, but it was something about to, the minimum balance was to be able to float those departments at the beginning of the year when grants were not timed right, like you were saying, like current issue, um, so I, I believe it's not quite that restrictive of, but I'd have to go back and pull that.
More of a goal.
And I think part of the challenge is departments are interpreting that differently.
Jeff is sort of the meeting with Jen and I to talk about one oh seven.
Struggles there as well and nine oh one fund and other.
Right.
Yeah, the state.
And I, and I know my, my interpretation of it is that that's a cash flow reserve so that they can do, not that you can never drop below it because otherwise that is like dead money.
Right.
Why have it if I have a reserve I could never use? The whole point of it was supposed to be, here's your rev, your revenues come in at different times during the year. We, the, how those got set was what's your, what's your likely, you know, year, monthly cash flow? You know, depending, it was different fund by fund depending on when you got your money. And so if you're getting regular grant reimbursements once a month or once a quarter, how much are you gonna have to have in there to cover your typical AP and your typical, uh, deployment expense during that period? And we got to make sure that you don't run out of cash to pay things until you get reimbursed. That's what that number is not, oh, you always have to never, you know, you have to have a hundred thousand dollars sitting in here that we're never gonna touch. No, that should be over in the accumulated so we can use it somewhere else.
That was my interpretation.
He's gonna go negative.
Right, but he's not gonna be negative below.
No, it's gonna be zero.
Oh, okay, well, that's, that's a problem. That's what we do, we need to change his other.
Really?
Yeah.
That's bad.
That's bad, no.
I don't like to sit here and be hearing that here, it would be nice to have gotten a call about that, potentially. So, yeah, we, we don't, we have zero funds that have, and I mean, we, you, you can't have a negative balance at the end of the month.
Um, didn't worry for my kids, it's not.
You do go negative at the end of the month, do we pull?
Well, we've never had that really happen because we've had, so far since I've been here, um, we have, uh, I mean, like public health, which did go negative, but we had a lot, we, we could see that coming and we established a life preserver for them in the line of credit, which has been paid back and that's now not there. And they have a reasonable cash balance as we'll see as we go through here. So, I mean, but yes, I mean, those are things that we need if people, and I think the.
Say something before you're getting.
That's what I was just gonna say, it would be nice if people would reach out to, because there's a difference, because here's the problem. These people that are managing these funds, they have budget. They, one oh seven has tons of budget, they can run things through AP and payroll because they have the budget, they just don't have the cash to pay those. And people get those confused as to what they are and they're going, oh, I have money. Well, no, you don't, you have budget, you have budget room to be able to expend these dollars, but you have no cash to write the check for those. And so there is, that's kind of where the training goes. And I think our expectation is that these department heads are managing that, that's their responsibility. And, and it sounds like Jeff is, he's, can see it coming, saying, hey, okay, hey, we need to figure this out.
So I, I, since this is a good little learning experience for me, why is this happening? Is he, he's spending funds now that he was gonna get a grant next month?
No.
Or?
So, um, the funds that go to this, um, this fund are coming from a state grant from the military department and those employees that manage that grant have been moved to the state E O C for the pandemic. So they're backlog because they're trying to get out money as fast as possible for the pandemic. So his, his regular grant is backlogged and they are slow paid, is the situation.
And that's not, I will be honest, that's not uncommon per se. I think that we are seeing that there are things like that. I talked to somebody from the state treasurer's office the other day, they still have not been to the office in Olympia since March of two thousand twenty.
So this, I mean, he, he's budgeted to spend this money in, let's say, April, because that's when the grant should have been here. But because it's not, not coming until May, he's having a thirty day whoops.
And, and this one is very restricted by R C W, um, so, yes.
Right, and we had it similar in senior services two or three years ago when the legislature went into, you know, twenty seven, uh, special sessions. They didn't get, you know, they didn't adopt the, and they made all these commitments for funding. Well, normally that's, they know what stuff is, things have been done in, you know, April or May, they get the contracts out, they get them signed and buy, not necessarily the first, you know, July one of the biennium, there's a check, but usually fairly caught, well, they didn't even get done until, yeah, and so it was like, they were like, you're not gonna get any money till October, that you, we owed you July one. And it was the same thing, we're like, well, we're gonna have to take some of our money and put in there because they have budget authority, but she has no cash. And so we loaned basically the state money in a sense.
So essentially this isn't our department or our employees' fault budgeting wise, other than maybe they should foreshadow having issues and come to us a little earlier, other than.
Yeah, I, I mean, and I, I think, I think he is, I mean, I think there's some of this stuff that you don't know until, you know, but, but we have, I mean, kind of like, I, I use the, the health department as a premise, I mean, we, we could see that that was coming and, and we, we could look at the trend and we could see where we were at and we could see the reimbursements. And, you know, we knew that there was a lot of money being thrown at the health department and different things that they were trying to do. We had, you know, and so we dealt with all the pieces, the staffing part of it, the line of credit and we, and so far it seems to be working and, and things seem to be going well over there. But I think that's it, there, those things are happening and I think they're happening not just for emergency management, I think. And we have school districts that are looking for some money for a internet E rate kind of thing and we're not seeing it like we normally would. And so that kind of stuff, it's just a timing difference. And again, it's not large sums of money, so it's not causing any problems. But if you are getting large appropriations or large reimbursements on grants or something, that can cause problems. And that's why then we have the flexibility to be able to manage all the pieces.
So Jeff is managing.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this wasn't a call to him, this, this goes back to like my previous question on the oversight of the smaller taxing districts. Do we have somebody like oversighting this issue with our own little, or do we just not know because?
Smaller taxing districts are being audited by the state auditor.
Right, yeah, so, no, that's, this wasn't a hit on nine one one, it was just.
So, so as long as we loan the money to, like, if you're gonna go negative and we do the loan, we can pull that money back out to us when they get it. But if we just put money into some of these restrictive loans, it's there and we can't pull it right out, right?
So like, we're, we're working on the resolution for the building. I mean, there, that has a term sheet, it has an interest amount, I think that's why, back to that maybe is a good point. That's why the interest amount is on there, so no one fund is spending money from another fund and so on and so forth. And we, you know, yes, it's all the same money, but it does, it, it seems to be fair. Because if you, if these were their own standalone businesses, and I'm gonna pick on the senior services because we have to be on that page, and they needed a cash flow loan, they would have to go to the local bank and they would have to pay whatever the going rate is. It's not that it's, they're not a bad credit risk, there's no, you know, and it's just, they need a, a short term note, they're gonna have to pay all the fees, all the pieces, so by us being able to do some of these things, we can do the better for the greater good by charging the interest and doing everything and that way they're everything's square.
Right, and to, to Commissioner Anderson's point, it is, it's, you want to do the loan, not just, oh, well, just, otherwise it's just an appropriation.
Right, and that's, that's actually the difference.
It's like. Your budget, by doing that.
Or your fund balance, and that's kind of where we went back to with the fund balance and getting back to the budgeting. You know, when you come in, and I say you, when the department head or the person managing these funds comes into the board to ask for an additional budget lift, the answer is where are the dollars coming from? Well, if the dollars are coming from fund balance, then they might have, be getting an appropriation that's greater than the expenses that they're getting. So they have that money in here, which is one of the things we've discussed, is it's nice having that in a place of one twenty five where these guys are managing to their piece. And then you guys can appropriate that to where you think it needs to go to, to, for the greater, all of the, all of the funds. So that we don't have one fund getting greater or less or however.
That's a question based on Commissioner Anderson, I don't know if it's for the auditor or the treasurer. If you just put money in, into our restricted fund that's imposed full loan, does that money then take on the restriction?
But, yeah, cause it's, once it, the fund, it only goes one direction. You can't, under those strings, it teens that market, it gets colored.
Which is the reason for the restricted funds, I mean, that, there's a purpose of why they are there, so that it works the way it does.
Well, I think we kind of just hammered out one oh seven. Walk away from that one.
Well, yeah, but it's, you know, that's great. The conversation was had on one oh seven, but it really wasn't, it was one oh seven issue, it was a training issue.
Right, yeah.
That we just had to be.
Okay, one away is the marine fund for the sheriff's office, um, they use that for, you know, I've seen payroll go through that fund for when they're out patrolling the waters, um.
Is that covering the V R and R two for replacing boats and jet skis? Or is that in a V R?
I don't know if they charge, but does, does there those, does it get charged against that fund to make their, their?
Well.
I guess.
The way the V R and R works, like Jen will be working with the various departments. And so their rental rates are established and that money's going into V R.
V R and R, but is their rental rate being for, is the boat being paid for their V R and R allotment coming out of the marine?
I don't know where they, I don't know where the sheriff is.
I can put that on the parking lot.
I'm just, yeah.
Clarify why I'm asking this question. Because if replacement of boats and jet skis is coming from grants and vehicle registration fees, that's one thing. Uh, if it's coming from our budget in a general fund that which we then have some control over, I might have a different answer on replacing a boat, um, than if it was a coming out of grant funds that really I should have them saying.
I know in the past they have had grants to pay for a big portion of some of their boats. I don't believe it's coming out of marine, but I.
I, I don't know.
Really, so you, their, their portion for their boat.
Being paid out.
Really, so you, their V R, their portion for their boat replacement, is it being paid out of that? Because it, to me, it should. If I buy the boat, if I buy the jet ski using those dollars, those restricted dollars, it's replay, you know, that's a restrict, I can't take that boat and use it for anything else, because it can only be used for that purpose, then its replacement should be being funded.
Yes, but they might be paying wages out of those grants.
I believe the only things I've seen come out of marine are wages, um, and some such lies, but, you know, I mean, it's a teeny tiny little fund.
Whereas I don't know that the boat and the jet skis are actually on V R.
I don't know that they are either.
I think there, it's a one-off, you, you, you took the money, you buy it, and then when it's, then you buy a new one out of that fund.
Years when the new marine comes your way.
Yeah, maybe, so maybe non-issue, but.
There's not much activity to the marine, but it's usually pretty minimal.
Not a lot of revenue goes through that.
Great, man.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
I like it here, the weeds. Veterans relief.
Fund one ten, veteran, veteran relief fund. Do you wanna touch on that? Is it right here?
Sure, what do you wanna know? That, it's levy funded, um, the indigent uh, expenses come out of that, um, Bill's salary comes out of that, a portion of my salary comes out of that. Obviously, supplies and things for Bill, but it's a relatively small fund. I believe you guys put in about fifty grand a year under the levy.
So what if, for the relief of indigent veterans, so what can that be used for then by statute?
So, um, we have a revolving fund that's for indigent vets. And there are, there's an R C W that defines what it can be used for. It's used for burial expenses. It's, that's outside of the revolving, but it's used for burial expenses. It's used for, um, meals, groceries, rents, that kind of thing for indigent, um, vets, and because Bill is involved in processing the, um, the indigent vet claims which come through the legion. Um, and, and I generally write those checks, hours, portions of my salary, and then all of Bill's salary is, is covered through that fund.
Okay, so, so I always thought it was mainly just Bill's salary, but it's actually checks to buy groceries and other things and pay for the burials. And does Bill make the decision, or?
So the way that works is an indigent vet goes to the legion here in Golden Dale or White Salmon, and it says, I need money for whatever, and there's a five hundred dollar cap per twelve-month period for those.
Okay. Is that in the statute, or is that an internal policy?
I think that's an internal policy. There's a, I, the statute, I believe, talks about the limit on burial benefits, but that's kind of outside and kind of of the indigent piece. And so they go to the, the legions. The legions establish whether or not they qualify for those benefits. Based on, they have to be honorably discharged and some other standards of indigency, um, and then we reimburse the legions.
How much?
So, that, the legion submits basically their reimbursement claim. Bill looks at it and see, it, see, looks to see that it meets the requirements of the, the statute and our internal policies. And then, um, he forwards it on to me for reimbursement if he means that it's reimbursed.
How many dollars a year do you think it's spent on that, that indigent?
So, in fact, I just gave that report yesterday to the veterans advisory board. In two thousand twenty, uh, we had eleven claims for just over thirty-nine hundred dollars. Thirty-nine forty-six oh six, to be exact, is what we spent in two thousand twenty. Um, two thousand twenty was a very lean year in terms of, uh, reimbursements to the legions. Sounds like there might be another thousand bucks or so that was spent by the legion that didn't make it through our, our pipeline, but, um, it was-
That seems like a low number for what, what we are.
And generally, we spend, most of it is spent in the winter months, and it's spent on utilities. We have, um, tightened our restrictions on those expenditures and what actually qualifies in the last couple of years, um.
Who's we? Is that the veterans board, or?
Um, we is the, um, board of county commissioners and the auditor's office.
So.
The, the role of the veterans advisory board is to advise the board of county commissioners on the needs of the indigent vets and what service, make recommendations on services that the county commissioners could provide to county vets. They don't have any say other than as legion representatives.
Right, I didn't know if they would look at a claim like that and then submit it through the board or something.
Thank you.
I think, uh, one piece of information on this fund that might be relevant just for us is that it is out of the general levy as far as the cap on the levy, and that's been, that's something I've worked on for years, legislative, not, not made any headway, is to try to remove it outside, so it's its own, cuz it's, it's, so every dollar that we levy in that fund is a dollar we're actually taking away from the general levy, cuz it's you. Um, and I have argued, you know, that it really should be, I don't see an issue. People would, I mean, when you get your property tax bill, and it's, it's on there, it'll say, you know, and it's, you know, three dollars and twelve cents or something. I don't think, I think everybody's really supportive of that, but it's, it's always, it's a, so we think of it as dedicated money. It is, but it's dedicated at the expense of taking that three dollars from somewhere else, so it's a, it's a really easy way for, oh, well, that has its own funding. It's like, it does, but it, it really decreased this money over here, and it really should be its own standalone, where it's its own levy, and because it's, it's adjustable too. I mean, we're up to, it's a big number. It could be, like, we could raise that levy if we had a bunch of, but that just lowers, it's the same dollar. And so, um, but it would take a legislative change to do that, and for, if that's considered to be a tax increase, and so it's, it's a no-go, so. If you have any thoughts on election reserve while we're on that one then?
Do you have any specific question?
Yeah, are there questions on election?
Give us a overview, and then we'll come up with questions.
Okay, so election reserve pays, uh, Brandy and Leah's salaries. It pays a portion of mine and Brenda's salaries. It pays the, uh, county cost basically of, of elections, because the county doesn't reimburse itself for, um, our elections. The state only reimburses one.
Audrey.
Right, one of, one of-
Whenever it's, when they have nothing on it.
On the ballot.
That wasn't by accident.
Right.
Oh, no, we pay half the time.
It pays for postage, uh, the utilities are now responsible for all of the postage on the ballots.
I have a, a kind of an offshoot question. This little Glenwood Fire District thing up there, what's the cost to hold this election?
So I can't give you that number, um.
Because you don't know it, or because?
Because we don't know it yet.
Right.
Um, because it's, it's based on staff time, it's based on, you know, how much paper we had to buy. I mean, it's, it's hard costs.
Do you have just a thought off the top of your head?
Not that I would be willing to, uh, give you, no. We only have like three hundred and sixty-eight, um, voters in that.
I, I had this exact same conversation with Brandy, and she gave the exact same answer. I tried to.
Who are we gonna try next?
Yeah. Just an idea.
About this size, but it didn't pertain to Glenwood at all, but was about three hundred and some odd voters. What does that would cost? Oh.
I don't do the billing.
Ah.
But generally, you know, you've got also, you've got more than one issue on the ballot, and like K D H ran, um, its own,
Yeah.
the, the second time it ran, its levy was all by itself, but that's a bigger district, and we've also started in the last two years, I can get his outsourcing. So, you know, if I had, I had an invoice for the printing of the ballot, the mailing of the ballot, I might be able to give you a, a closer number, but because this one is so small, we're doing it all in-house, so don't have real numbers until we actually do the billing. But Glenwood-
Great way to not answer my question.
Glenwood will pay the, uh, the entire cost.
Right, I was just curious what, what that number was.
Well, so, lot, you, that's one of the things when you're running one of these ballots, you have to figure, because sometimes the cost of the election could be almost half of what you're trying to-
Well, that's, I guess, was kind of my point, is if, if Glenwood's trying to put this on, do, is somebody gonna be able to advise them on what we're probably gonna charge them? Um, or do they just have to crap shoot it and go, well, it could be five grand, it could be fifty grand, we don't know, let's just run it?
They, that's a decision that their board of commissioners has to make as to whether or not the risk is, is worth it, and they should be able to glean some information, having run prior levies, as to what that cost was. And it's going to be at least as much as it was for that one when they shared it with somebody. So they should be able to figure out a minimum charge.
I'm not gonna get my question answered. Let's move on.
Though, though that would be the question for these, these juniors is, is, do you wanna run it on your own, or are you gonna save thirty or forty percent if you run it, you know?
A bigger one, wait for somebody else.
Yeah, and we do advise them that if they are the only ones on the ballot, that they, they will pick up the entire cost.
How does that work?
But there's timing issues too, particularly with levies and, and having to get that information into the assessors so that you get your tax money. So sometimes they don't have the option of waiting.
Right.
Which I think is, is the issue with Glenwood, is they don't have the option of waiting, so they've gotta take the risk.
Additionally, to the election reserve fund, they have a sub-fund set up for the elections capital fund.
So, that had to do, we haven't used that sub-fund. We were getting, um, generally grants are reimbursable. We got a grant from the secretary of state's office where they gave us all the money, and then we just have to give back whatever we didn't spend. So we had initially talked about setting it up as a separate sub-fund. We didn't ultimately go down that path, so that fund has never been used.
True story.
Just.
It was an idea we ran with and then realized it.
Doesn't work based on the way that funds are set up in, in our system.
Okay, fund one twelve is flood control. This fund is to be expended as the state legislature being prescribed for the benefit of public schools, public roads, county, um, of the county or counties in which such property is, um, situated, or for defraying any expense of county government and such and such improvements, provided that when such property is situated in more than one state or county, the, um, just sure to share to each from the proceeds of such property shall be proportional to its area therein. That's what I can think of that.
Yep, and Lee manages this, and most of this money is invested most of the time.
What is, what is it?
It's really nondiscretionary. It can be used for anything.
Any general purpose.
The commissioners, the county has historically used it for, there was an irrigation district that was da- damaged due to fire and the runoff. And so, um, they received, requested and received a grant which was paid for out of that fund.
We're talking Glenwood?
Yes, we are.
What's, what are you getting on that investment?
Eleven basis points.
Zinger.
That revenue into that fund, having it's a pretty small revenue stream every year.
Yeah, well, it's fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents of investment interest. I'm sure that's what that is.
Supposed to be see revenue, I think it's only been about sixty-three hundred per year from the, uh, federal government.
Cuz there's deposits randomly as we get.
Right, and a lot of times I was able to call and I had a contact out of Portland out of the
Yeah, which, which are my-
Engineers, and so it's like, where's our money?
So that, I guess that's my other question. How much money goes into this account?
They said about sixty-three hundred dollars.
So this is essentially just a savings account in case we have an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We generally don't, we don't budget, uh, expenses.
And there are some, isn't there some property that's held, or isn't that flood control owns some property or anything, or no? Is that just my imagination?
Don't believe so.
I don't think, okay. One thirteen, oh, treasures are on, that's me. Uh, this is essentially set up for foreclosure, so all foreclosure fees and dollars that are revenue collected go into here for penalties and interest, or not for penalties and interest, those go into the general fund, but foreclosure fees such as, um, you know, collecting for a title report or whatever, but then we pay the title report back out of this fund. So, um, these are all collections. So right now, when we ran the tax title auction, all those dollars would be coming out of this fund. Not the surplus though, cuz that's a different, that's not the same. Um, but because they were kind of the same parallel, we use some of these dollars to pay for the, some of the shared expenses or wherever, but we, yes, this is for foreclosure.
Um, fund one fourteen is the law library fund. Superior Court runs that, um, has a minimum balance of five thousand. The county treasurer shall deposit in the, in the county or regional law library fund a sum equal to seventeen dollars for every new probate or civil filing fee. Um, includes appeals and counterclaims, crossclaims, third-party claims, civil actions collected by the clerk of the superior court. And seven dollars for every fee collected for the commencement of, of a civil action, and for the filing of a counterclaim, crossclaim, third-party claim, and any civil action in district court for the support of the law library in the county and the regional law library, to which it belongs.
I assume that can be books or internet type of?
It's all internet now. It used to actually be physical books, but we did, we switched over.
Yeah, what are, spending the money that's going-
So they still have a room in there, don't they?
Yeah, it's upstairs.
Quite.
Well, and I think they, the law library improvements, they did some, they spent some of that out of that fund, I think.
But other than that, what are we gonna spend that money on?
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, it goes through superior court, doesn't, um, they marry, or, uh, Mary Jo, yeah, get those, yeah.
And, and no, and at least in superior court, a lot of these are waived, so just because we should be getting seven bucks for every civil filing, then we're getting seven bucks for every civil file, so.
Well, and I guess I would say, who has this, this, who has the discretion on whether those dollars are spent or not spent, or are spent on what?
Judge.
The judge itself, or the law library?
Board.
Board.
I think mostly, I believe it's the judge that-
So is there, is there, can you take that beginning cash balance and turn that into investments as well, so and let it sit there if you're not gonna spend it for one?
They, if they want it. So the, the, the thing with that is, we could, but right now, the county is reinvesting that because it's not invested, so the interest not running there, so that's part of the money that's going into the general.
We're getting the interest.
Residual cash.
We'll talk about it.
So we, we invest on behalf of the funds that they give us, like, like one twelve, that's the prime example. Lee gives me her investment sheets, we work together, we figure out what she can do. If she needs to mature something early, cuz there's an expense that she did plan, we do that. But we work with Lee to do that, and then that investment money goes right back into one twelve. If nobody gives us any investments, then we don't let all the county cash sit idle, we actually invest it, and then that money goes back into the current events.
And then that eleven basis points.
Eleven basis points.
Yeah, smoking.
It used to be much better in years past.
It's kinda gone. It was twenty basis points when I was the treasurer, then it got up to as high as like two and some change, two percent and something, and then we're back down then.
Well, yeah, interest rates are nonexistent now.
Yes, we're having to not pay anybody to take it. That's good, I guess.
Oh, it's, it's inflating away.
Coming away, yeah.
Okay, one fifteen is a victim and witness fund, um, under the prosecuting attorney. Um, this is for programs and services to assist victims and witnesses in crimes in, um, against the offenders. Uh, the revenues come from penalties, sometimes fines, or failed forfeiture grants and landfill. One sixteen is the county fair.
I can, this is a fund that's set up, it's, as people can see, it's part of the one hundred funds, so it is a county, it's county dollars. This is always the conversation, so the fair is a county event on county property. And this is where we manage their dollars as to what they are getting. They do invest their dollars, so they have currently an investment of the ninety-eight thousand. So you'd have to add the fifty-three and the ninety-eight to know what their cash balance would be, about a hundred and forty, somewhere in there, a hundred and fifty. But, so that's the, that's the fund and it has, they have their own budget, they present that. And this is for expenses for the fair. And it's usually, all, most all of the activity in this fund happens in July and August.
Is this, now when we put money or give money to the fair, do we put money to this account for them? Or do we build things at the fair to account for some money?
Oh, so we, we allocate dollars from the landfill to the fair fund?
Number twenty-seven?
Twenty-five, I thought, or twenty. And then they pay back the county ten thousand dollars to do fair improvements. Those are the two that I know off of my head.
Right, and then any other, cause since the fair is actually a county facility, it's like any other county building that we, it's on the list, right? Capital improvements there.
Right. 117 is the weed fund or weed control board.
Grant restrictions, that's the only thing.
And this comes from weed assessment fees or timber and regular weed control that are on county taxes. Or we bill, we bill an assessment, it's not a tax, it's an assessment, I have to remind everybody of that, cause they always are like, oh, my taxes, like, no. You have taxes and assessments, this is not an adverb tax, this is an assessment based upon, and the weed control board sets the rates. At the top of my head, I can't tell you what they are currently right now, but they're different for weed, timber and weed, regular. And this is not just weed, and so, so yeah, that's what this fund is.
All right, secondary question that might be kind of strange and odd, is that actually, since it's not a tax, it's an assessment, say if you put in a project anywhere, night road, pump storage, whatever, do they, are they considered a special taxing district, or they will get access monies from that?
No, cause that, they're, they're not a, they're, they're not, they're not a special, special taxing districts are six hundred and above. This is, and this is assessment, so the property will still receive an assessment if it has, cause it goes on the property based upon acres, weed acres or weed timber acres. And there's usually, I, I believe, and again, there's a flat fee and then there's a per acre amount, but I don't remember what those amounts are.
It doesn't matter if it's a million dollar home or a painting, it's, you pay the same.
I will say with the weed department though, and this is one thing that we, you know, the, the state is really hating to pay assessments. And they are starting DOTs, when I say the state, I'm speaking of their agencies. Department of Transportation is one of them, and they really don't, you know, they're like, well, we're tax exempt. Well, you are tax exempt, you're not receiving taxes, this is an assessment, and you have to pay the assessment for the Conservation District and the weed board. And so we have that, and they're kind of starting to bow their neck a little bit, and it's kind of not correct, in my opinion, but that's just my own treasurer opinion, I just. Yeah. So they, so anyway, so that is something to keep in track of with the weed, you know, folks, is they are struggling on trying to maintain their revenue base from state-owned property.
118 is Auditors O and M, restricted to historical document preservation, requires a surcharge of five dollars per instrument of each document recorded. And then the deposit of the, that five dollars is broken out and restricted as to which bars revenue code it needs to go to.
So portion of mine Tories and Brenda's salaries come out of this fund. That's basically its, its current expenditures. If we replace our microfiche machine, if we upgrade the recording system, if we do a big document retention scanning, microfiche digital imaging kind of thing, that would come out of this.
119 is economic development. That is about a minimum balance of a hundred thousand dollars. It's for distressed rural county, or distressed rural county tax can be spent on public economic development facilities and staff, assistance to existing and potential businesses to promote economic growth. There's RCWs and a resolution for that fund. And the revenue sources are grants, landfill and distressed rural county tax. 122, county tax.
Actually, I'll back up, sorry. Probably more of a question for Dave, how much of the, do we actually spend on economic development? Versus how much of that do we spend on wages and salaries?
I think the resolution, I don't know if it directs, if it's twenty percent or twenty-five percent of it goes, so eighty, so eighty percent would go for, you know, bricks and mortar and twenty percent for ours. But that's relatively recent, I want to say that was like
Three years ago.
Three years ago, it used to be a hundred percent.
With brick and mortar?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've helped, cause we.
And even at twenty-five percent, we're still low compared to a lot of.
We have, yeah.
Well, sure, yeah. Okay, sorry.
122 is the county tax refund fund. It's refunding of property taxes of state assessed utilities due to appeals.
And I have not seen any change in this fund since I've been here, it just stays that same amount.
123 is tourism, economic development, of course, have that fund, lodging tax can be used for tourism marketing, supporting capital expenditures, tourism and tourism-related facilities. It's revenue is lodging tax, there is a resolution in RCW for that. 124 is investigations under the sheriff's office. It's crime investigations and enforcement of illegal drug activities, Superior Court fees and evidence confiscation funds that fund.
And this is the fund where the house in Lisle will get deposited into this bucket right here.
Reserve, 125, that is your fund. And it's emergency and disaster relief capital programs, economic development, community development. Founded by landfill, sales tax, interlocal agreements. Lee, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, it's kind of been a catch-all and it's totally at the board's discretion of what those funds need to be spent on. It fluctuates yearly depending on the need. And there again, I try to keep as much invested as possible. And Greg's been really, really valuable, cause I've had major purchases starting, you know, okay, this is gonna come down the road. I need to make sure, so I was gonna mature dollars, and Greg's like, well, let's just wait, let's hold off. And so he's very, very behable to me to help, I try to get as much return as we can. So that's, that's really been interesting. Having the COVID and all those expenses taken out of it was very confusing and stressful. Let me do that this next time, I'd like to see it a little bit different.
There's not gonna be a next time.
Well, like the.
With the resuscitate America.
Go through here too, but now we have that option, we can actually talk to our, our coworkers, and I think that's gonna be way better.
And I think we learned, I, I think we, there's some of the stuff we did, I mean, I think, you know, we thought it might work and it didn't. I think we've learned where we can, I agree with you, we can discuss and make sure, makes it easier.
That's gonna help.
Hopefully we have time to get ahead of it.
Yes.
Reacting.
And these guys are wonderful to work with, all of them.
But we're still getting practically no.
No interest on it, no.
And the only time that'll go up likely is when the Federal Reserve rate goes up.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the economic right now, I think everybody's just kind of waiting to see, I don't see rates, there's no, you know, my crystal ball, there are things I read in the tea leaves, I don't think there's anything through the rest of twenty twenty-one.
I kinda like the fact that we're not making any interest money out, because anything we spending on, if we were making more interest, when we went to spend it, we'd have to pay ten percent more, fifteen percent more, so it's not bad, I'm kind of okay with those.
Okay, 127 is an emergency management fund, it is grant-funded, interlocal agreements and landfill. There's a minimum balance of seventy-five thousand. This is for provisions of emergency preparedness programs, plans, disaster recovery mitigation. They, they have grant restrictions and their grants, I will say, are the most difficult grants I've seen to manage for the dollar amount that you're getting.
Like they're bigger.
I mean, they get their hands full over there dealing with those grants.
And as you can see, we're below the minimum balance. So this is one of those where, and I think that's where we need to bring, and I have on the parking lot, to bring back the minimum balance resolution to make sure that we're have it as it got, you know, that we just have the discussion to ensure how we interpret that or whichever. I, there's not a concern that it's bad, it's just, that's, you know, where we're at as we go through. And we're, we started out right barely under, then, you know, we had a little bit, so we'll kind of be watching that. But that's one of the reasons why we wanted to put the minimum balance on here, just so we could have the discussion of where it goes and how it's most effective, so.
I'm gonna, if you quit, it's, it's just.
We have one question before we end this topic, you were talking about grants, it's hard grants, lots of paperwork, blah, blah, blah. Do we have, or have we had grants that we get and then it's just too hard a paperwork that we don't comply with the grant? And end up needing it? I don't have an answer on that.
I know, I know we've said no, where we, we've, we've had a grant.
That it's too much paperwork, it isn't worth doing, but we've taken it and then.
I don't, I'm not aware of that, although I guess you could argue, we probably have some that we're not aware, that it might have, might have cost us more than we actually got, I, I can think of a couple where we got the grant award, but when it came time to actually execute the contract, we didn't, because one day, in the analysis, we said, they never, we never even got the money. We just said, we're not gonna sign the contract. Okay, it is ten o'clock, so we're gonna stop, so I will recess the Board of Commissioner meeting until I guess one o'clock out at the fairgrounds, we'll reconvene out there. And I will now. Okay, I will now open the Board of Health meeting.
Thank you, guys.
And if you guys have questions, we can.
Thank you.
Okay, I will call the Clickatet County Board of Health meeting to order. I believe we have all of our board members are present. Hi, Aaron, nice to see you.
I'm saying, I've got a question for you, do you guys stock that scene at the health department? I would assume it's probably Moderna.
Okay. Okay, so we definitely have a quorum, since we have all five of our members are here. And so I guess we can start, I would be looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm confident you do it.
Can we just change the page? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to be approved, the agenda.
You have a motion, a second on agenda discussion, welcome our, our remote members as well. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Okay, motion pass, aye, motion passes unanimously, that brings us to the minutes. Have the folks received the minutes and have an opportunity to review them?
Yes.
Okay, Sue, were you okay with that? Okay? And I would, team members, or I guess in-person members, then I would entertain a motion on the minutes as well.
I move that we, that we adopt the minutes from the last meeting.
We're trading.
Second. Okay, I have a motion. And who, Aaron, who's doing the minutes, is it? I mean, who's?
We record them and.
You just record them, okay.
And then Kelly size her.
So I, cause some, some meetings, folks that are not necessarily in the room like to know who's making the mo, you know, if you're not here sometimes. So sometimes, as the chair, I'll restate, Sue made the motion and was seconded by Jake, but that's not necessary. Is that helpful? Okay.
Yeah, that helps them out a lot.
Okay, thanks, so they're not trying to discern from the recording, who said what?
No, she'll be very grateful.
Okay, so we have a motion by Sue and a second by Jake to adopt the March eighteenth minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, that's, then this to our first, or our next item. I keep flipping screens here, COVID nineteen discussion, so we're gonna start with a clinical update with Dr. Person, thank you. I papered it up.
Good morning, board, how is everybody doing? Have a lovely sunny morning.
It is a beautiful day today, so hopefully you have nothing but great news and your, your update is nothing but rainbows and unicorns.
I'm not sure if that'll be the case, but, but I think, you know, overall, things are positive. I did though want to spend a little bit of time talking about the recent news around the pause of the use of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, just ensure that everybody understands the, the facts around that. This won't have a much impact in Clickatet County as it has not represented a, a large portion of the vaccines that we have been using, so it shouldn't affect our ability to continue to safely and effectively vaccinate our population. But, so the, the pause for the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, this is not a recall or any sign that there was a problem with how the vaccine was manufactured. In fact, the calling of pause is really a sign that our systems to continue to monitor vaccines after they are in use in the general population is working. So providers are required to report deaths or any unusual events occurring after vaccination, whether or not they think the vaccine was related. And the reason for that requirement is precisely what we're seeing here, is to see if there are any unusual patterns even of very rare events. So with the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, through this monitoring, they did identify six cases of a rare type of blood clot, specifically a cerebral venous sinus thrombosis that was also associated with a low platelet count. And with having that, Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, which is our national organization, our national body that provides immunization recommendations, met yesterday to review the available data, and at this time they are extending the pause. And the reason they're extending it is really to get additional information. One of the things that we look at when we see events occurring after vaccination is to try to find out, is this, are we seeing it more often after vaccination than we would expect to see it in the general population? And with rare events like this, it takes time to gather that information. They'll also be watching to see approximately seven million doses of Johnson and Johnson vaccine have been administered in the United States. So this occurrence is about, as they say, one in a million. However, about half of the doses of Johnson and Johnson vaccine that have been administered, have been administered in the last two weeks. So what they will be watching is to see whether. So what they will be watching is to see whether additional cases of this are reported after vaccination. And again, to gather more information about the incidence of this type of rare blood clot in the general population. Because we do have two other vaccines that have not had any reports of this type of blood clot associated with it. We know that in Clickatet County, in Washington, and in the United States, there are alternatives that we can continue to use to ensure that we can vaccinate the population. Vaccines, like any other medicine or treatment or anything that is used, there are always going to be the weighing of the risks versus benefits. Blood clots are not only associated potentially with vaccines. We know they've been associated with birth control pills. They've been associated with over the counter pain relievers. So again, there are always risks versus benefits that we are weighing. We know the risks around getting COVID-19 do include hospitalization, death or long-term disability. And, and that is, you know, our sole purpose for wanting to vaccinate the population because we know that immunity through vaccination is safer than developing immunity through natural infection. So again, for Clickatet County, the pause on the use of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine should not have any immediate effects on the availability. And that's good because today is, as they're calling it, Vax Day rather than Tax Day. Because in the state of Washington now, anyone who is 16 or older is eligible to be vaccinated. So we want to continue to encourage everyone who, to get out there and get vaccinated. Particularly as across the state, we are starting to see what they're calling the, the fourth wave and the population groups that it seems to be most highly concentrated in. So where we're seeing disease rates rising the quickest is in our young adults. And so that's a group that hasn't really been eligible to be vaccinated in, in large proportions before today. So we're gonna be hoping they will all take advantage of that opportunity so that we can make sure that this fourth wave, even the tidal wave, but maybe just a, a little blip. Department of Health also yesterday released a report on vaccine breakthrough cases. And at this point, there, there is a case in Clickatet County that is being investigated, but has not yet been confirmed as a vaccine breakthrough case. Vaccine breakthrough cases are very rare. Across the state, they represent about 0.01% of the population that's been vaccinated. So again, vaccine is still very effective in reducing your risk of transmission. In the other counties that I supervise, looking at that data for the few vaccine breakthrough cases we've seen there compared to the cases in unvaccinated, you were over 120 times more likely to develop COVID-19 over the last couple of months if you were not vaccinated versus vaccinated. So vaccine, again, besides being very effective in preventing hospitalization and death from COVID-19, is also proving to be effective in reducing your likelihood of developing COVID-19, although it is not 100%. And that is it for my clinical update, so I'll entertain any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Dr. Person. I did have one question as far as back to the JJ vaccine and the, is there a time, is there some thought as to the timeframe that symptoms would normally occur? As far as the blood, I mean, is it in the first three days or a week? Or is there some sense as far as once you get out a certain point, it's, we're not seeing, again, based on six cases? But is there, is there?
And, and that's a great question. And the cases that they've seen have occurred within a few days to a little over a week. So right now, what they're saying is if it's, if you've been vaccinated and it's been more than three weeks, they don't see any risk of that. Recommendations to anybody who's received Johnson and Johnson vaccine, if it's been less than three weeks, they're asking people to keep an eye out for unusual symptoms. So what most people who have had this type of blood clot have, have reported is a, you know, severe unrelenting headache, severe abdominal pain, or signs of unusual bleeding or bruising. So anybody who sees those, who's received the vaccine within the last three weeks should see their doctor or, you know, get checked out. But if it's been more than three weeks, none of the cases have been reported after that timeframe. So that, that's kind of where we're looking at for risk of this, if it is associated with the vaccine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Christopher has a question.
Um, have any of these blood clots resulted in stroke?
I, from the limited clinical data that, that was presented at the meeting, did not see any that were related to stroke. There was one fatality associated with it, but did not see any mention of stroke.
Okay, and one, one last question. Do you, does anybody know the age ranges of the people that are, are current cases in the county?
Yeah, there, I think average of about 50 this week is where we're at with the active cases that we have.
Average age is 50?
Yes, yep. We don't have anyone.
I mean, I'm, I guess my question is, how many do we have in the 2030?
One. Currently.
So our percentages are holding about normal? I guess I'd say, are we getting less elderly because there's more vaccines or percentage is about the same as it always has been?
Let me pull that up for you real quick.
I should have looked at that before I.
That's okay. I'm right here. That's why I don't leave anywhere without my laptop because I have it all right.
I guess the reason I ask this is, is the big push nationally that you're overseeing a spike in the younger population.
Is that a?
I want to see if we're reflective here as.
So in our county, most of our cases have been in the 20 to 29 range. So out of 765, 149 of those have been in the 20 to 29 range. 21 have been 80 and over, 117 in the 30 to 39 range. So that's gonna be, that's our biggest group right there. And that's the group that we're seeing as Dr. Person said, the increased.
But the percentages are kind of holding.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions for Dr. Person? No, I'm not, not seeing any from the board members online. Okay, thank you, Dr. Person.
Thank you.
We will move on to situation update. Ms. Quinn.
Yes, so I'm just gonna go ahead and start with vaccines. So to date, according to the DOH this morning, we've administered 14, over 14,000 doses of vaccine in this county. That means we have 22% of our county is fully vaccinated, which I think is a really big deal.
Yeah.
And, and over 31% of them have actually initiated the vaccine series. So I think, based on the historical vaccine hesitancy in this county, I think even though that seems like a really low number, that we're still doing a really great job. And I'm really, really pleased with the numbers that we have. We still have vaccine clinics scheduled today. I know KVH in North Shore and Skyline continue to offer vaccines as well. And they're having clinics that are, you know, get, they're getting a lot of interest, although not as much as any of us would like. Casey Pharmacy recently, that was a join the team to give vaccines as well, so you can receive vaccines through there, I believe by appointment only. So the vaccine program is going really well. Tomorrow at the Health Department, we're gonna demo the new software we got that will take away all of the data entry for us. It's gonna take away the paper for us. In the next month, it should open up online scheduling for us. Skyline and KVH will also be using that software. I don't know their entire timelines, but that's gonna really help residents of this county. People, they can just get on our website. They'll be able to just schedule when they want, what time they want. And that'll really take a lot of pressure off our staff and be able to make our clinics in just a lot more efficient. And then we'll be able to get more, more people through, which is our ultimate goal, obviously.
Do the, the numbers statewide for how many are fully vaccinated and how many have the one shot? Again, I should have looked at this before today, but all due to that.
Two, 34% initiated vaccine for the entire state of Washington. So we're right at the average for the state.
We're close. We're not lagging behind too far.
No, total vaccinated for the entire state is 23%. So we're, we're right neck and neck with the state as a whole.
So like I asked last time, do we have more vaccine than arms to put it in? But it looks like we're holding our own.
We've done okay with vaccine availability. One of the challenges, um, we haven't received Pfizer for the last two weeks. That's gonna be a challenge for us because that's the only vaccine we can get to under 18, so 16 to 18-year-olds. We ordered more for next week. We're hopeful we'll get that. I don't feel good about that. This is just based on your population and how they figure out the math to do that. For some reason, we don't need the criteria to get that Pfizer. So that could potentially impact some of our outreach, but I think, I mean, it will resolve, you know, then the next week we'll get some or something. So a little concerned about that, but otherwise we're able to get Moderna without too much problem. So that's been Moderna and Pfizer. We've been giving a lot. We haven't gotten a lot of Johnson and Johnson in this county. Only 450 doses of the total have been Johnson and Johnson vaccine.
The clinic that's going on at the fairgrounds, is that all Pfizer, they did Moderna there too?
Pfizer, yep. So KVH is doing Pfizer, KCHD, our Health Department is doing Moderna. Skyline and North Shore are doing Moderna and Pfizer. And Casey Pharmacy has Moderna as well. And they may have asked for some Pfizer. So only KVH is receiving Pfizer. They have the, the freezer to do that. And then they have been very graciously sharing their vaccine with the other providers in the county to make sure that that availability is there for those that want that, or for those that, you know, the 16 to 18-year-olds, if that's the only vaccine that they can receive. So, so really happy with where we're at for vaccines. Our case rates have been still kind, kind of quiet, which we appreciate. We're at 765 cases today. We have nine active. They're all in about the 50-year-old range is the average age right now. Cases this month have doubled over last month and they, they are double the cases that we saw last April. So really concerned about what that could look like. We just hit phase three. We're gonna be reevaluated for May 3rd. So the next two weeks are gonna be really important that people kind of make the right choices so that we can stay in, in phase three where we're at.
What's the, what's the threshold? We obviously know the governor will roll people back.
Yes, yep. They did. They rolled, uh, three counties rolled back to phase two. So in order for us to go back to phase two, based on our case rate, we'd have to have 100 to 175 cases over the last 14 days.
We keep our number under 100, we're okay.
Yep, we have to stay under 100. We also have to have less than three hospitalizations for COVID over the last seven days. I think it's been at least two weeks since we've had anyone that hospitalized. It was just a quick kind of overnight sort of a thing. So we haven't had a lot of hospitalizations in this county, so we've been fortunate there as well.
Is that, I mean, you just said less than 100. Is that out of per capita or is that a real?
That's a real number.
Now, we have mine. We can't go above 100.
Yes, yep. No, we have.
Do you have to mean both those metrics or just one?
Uh, just one.
So if you fail one of those metrics, if we fail the 100, but we don't have any hospitalizations, you still go survey it?
Yeah. So that will be reevaluated May 3rd. So we, our, our case rate and the number of active cases we have is very different because sometimes people get tested late in their symptoms. And so you could actually test positive and be recovered within a day or two. So our case rate for the last 14 days is 16, even though we only have nine active cases right now. So that there's a little nuance there, but 16 is still good. It's just concerning to me that we're seeing this little uptick. They have been associated with social gatherings. So again, know your, know your crowd, wear your mask, get vaccinated. Um, other than that, we're gonna start working on partnering with DOH and then I'll work with KVH, obviously, and Skyline to make sure we have some vaccine outreach materials targeted towards. We'll have to do some research into maybe what groups aren't getting the vaccine. And that's data I haven't pulled yet. But we'll pull that and look at that and do some targeted outreach to make sure that those people understand they have access to the vaccine and address maybe some hesitancy that we have in this county. So we're working towards that. Otherwise, working with the Fair Board, I had a really nice conversation with them. I'm really, I'm really happy with kind of the path forward with them. I've offered to attend any of their meetings that they would like, just as an advisor. And reminded them that obviously they have to bring their final plan to the Board of Commissioners. But, um, I, I, they have a good, they have a good plan. I'm excited. I think I'm, I'm optimistic, but hesitantly so as I have been all year.
I, I have a question. They used to test, I mean, in the beginning of this thing, they were testing people to see if they had had COVID in the past?
The antibody?
The antibody test, are they still doing that at all? Are those things available?
I don't know what the availability is in this county. You can probably get that test, but you'd have to have a provider order it and have a compelling reason why, if you wanted your insurance to cover it, I would imagine.
But they're not checking that stat out there to try to figure out how much of the population? Because I'm sure far more of the population has actually had it than what we've actually reported.
Oh, absolutely. I don't know that we're doing any of that surveillance in this county. I'm sure they are in somewhere.
Somewhere. I just haven't heard of it in months and months.
Yeah, would be a really interesting piece of information.
That's gonna protect your herd immunity, if you're gonna go for a herd immunity, but you know that.
I would love to have that info, but that's not.
So are you seeing, now that, now that everybody can practically go in, did you see a bump with that when, when that opened up or did?
Unfortunately, no, it's pretty disappointing. Like, uh, we were kind of prepared to have our doors knocked in and that didn't happen. And it's not just our department. That's a similar story for the other healthcare providers in this county. So I think that the people that really, really wanted the vaccine figured out how to get it. There are a lot more places that you can go. You go to Yakima on their mass site. I know people went to the Tri-Cities and to Clark County to their mass sites to have the vaccine.
I'm curious on what our percentage is gonna be this, you know, overminded body.
I, I think it will be significant, unfortunately.
It'll be 50% or?
No, I'd say at least 20.
But I can probably deal with that.
Yeah. So I mean, I mean, we just have work to do. We're just getting to the point, I feel like we're just kind of at a like holding pattern at the Health Department. This is our normal. This is just, we're doing vaccines. We're doing case investigations, which are lower. So we're able to just kind of, it's just, this is now our business is normal, unfortunately.
So our vaccine supply versus you, so we're being pretty much in balance as far as we don't. It sounds like we don't have a lot of folks like waiting and waiting because we just don't have supply. But you also don't have supply that's obviously just laying around, not getting used, so.
Johnson and Johnson, but yeah.
Well, okay.
That is.
But as far as the other ones, it's the, things are kind of in the sweet spot right now. We have about the right number of people coming. Again, we wish.
Yes.
But I guess the question would be then is if we got a big wave of people that were knocking everybody's doors down, would we be able to, could we get supply if we needed to? Is there capacity in the supply chain to do it?
Potentially. They're still doing it. The, and I can't explain this very well, but the pro-rata is they look at the number of people in your county and then they compare it to the state, then you get the percentages, all worked out and, uh.
Do the roulette wheel and.
Yeah, and then they.
Look at the stars and they end up with, here's what you're getting.
That's exactly how my life works.
Okay.
Because they, we do a lot of feedback to them. The, the providers ask for vaccine. I work with them on what they've asked for, what they've scheduled. We make recommendations to the states. They do your process, I'm pretty sure. And everybody opens their box on Monday and says, well.
Well, what do we get?
So that continues to be a challenge, just that we don't specifically know exactly what's gonna happen from week. So that continues to be a challenge, just that we don't specifically know exactly what's gonna happen from week to week. But I think everybody just isn't really scheduling a lot without knowing they have the vaccine in their hands, is kind of where we're at with that, I think, across the county, but.
Do you think there might be some of the hesitancy as far as the scheduling is that folks are maybe still think, well, it's, you know, I'll get to it later because there's fifty people waiting in line and.
I think there's some idea.
I don't know if we can educate folks.
People that need it, like, they want to make sure other people have gotten it first, kind of.
Right, not my turn yet.
And there's just hesitancy. We've seen a lot of peer pressure, so people come in and say, my friend just got this. They did really well. They told me I needed to come do it. And so then they're, then they're making the appointment.
From experience, I'm sure there's a bunch of people out there that are not opposed to it.
Right.
Uh, but they're waiting to see side effects from other people.
Yeah, and we've, we've certainly seen.
Decide which, if they want to get it in or which one they want to get.
Yeah. Well, and I'm sure the Johnson and Johnson pause, put a pause on.
That might have slowed things down a smidge.
I'm, I'm certain that did, and that's unfortunate, but.
Yeah. Okay.
And everything's gonna throw a smidgen on it. Yesterday, I was talking to a guy that, uh, his wife had got the Pfizer in February, and two months later she had three brain clots and strokes, which not related to the Pfizer, and that's why I was double checking the Pfizer thing. But anytime that happens and your friends hear about it, that, that's gonna throw a pause on whether they want to. You know, just because, I mean, it happened so close to it.
Right.
It's gonna slow down their thought process, so, sure.
Well, as I, you know, as far as COVID goes, that's, that's all we have. We're, they're doing a two hundred and five people today, white vaccine clinic and white salmon. They're, they're going to one of the agricultural workers, um, companies tomorrow. I think they've got a couple hundred there, so.
Okay, so that's, that's a pretty big numbers.
We've been on the east end of the county. We've, we're kind of expanding our, expanding our horizons a little bit with taking vaccine offsite, so that's worked out well.
And that's the other thing I could say to possibly reach the, the people that are hesitant. If, if the vaccine's at KVH and it's in public health and it's at the fairgrounds, it's all fine and dandy. But if it's set up in a booth on Main Street that parking was two blocks away yesterday, you might actually get some of those, not sure if they want to.
We've talked about this, and one of the challenges that we have with that is, you know, uh, last fall, we were going out to the Lyle Food Banks and giving flu shots to anybody that came to pick up food boxes, like, hey, do you want a flu shot? And we do that. The issue or the challenge we're gonna have is, if I open a bottle of vaccine, I have to know that I have ten people to give that to.
Oh, I see.
I can't just, like, do this onezity.
So even the Moderna, you, once you pop the bottle, you gotta use it all up right then.
Within six hours. So that's, you, you know, we'd love to, we're hopeful that maybe, and I haven't seen anything that says this, but at some point, if they have single-use vials, that'll really improve our ability to just, like, go to these sites and do it. But we can't, I cannot, I will not open a vial if I don't have a plan for, honestly, actually eleven people. lined up, so, because I, we can't waste vaccines.
Or at least people on an emergency list that will come to get your last shot.
Yep, yep.
So the, the two hundred today, is it a mix between first and second shot or is it primarily second shot?
Yeah, it's a mix.
I have a question, Erin. Can you hear me?
I can.
Um, what about people from, who are not residents of the county? Have you seen much? Do you know how that's, is that a factor?
Um, yes and no. So I know we've, with North Shore and Skyline, obviously, they're service district. Uh, we have seen patients from Skamania County. That's, and that's, you know, I know there have been, folks from other counties that have been able to get their vaccines here because they live, maybe they work here. Honestly, at, at our clinic, when you call to schedule, I ask you if you're a resident of the county. We encourage you to be a resident of the county. Uh, I'm not checking IDs. If you want the vaccine that badly, we'll give it to you.
Um, well, I, I appreciate that openness. Anyway, of course, we want our, our residents to get vaccinated, and that's a priority. And it sounds like everyone's really working on that, so.
I feel like the bulk of who we see are residents of this county, like, I, I mean, you know, it's a small county, you know most of the folks. So you walk through, you recognize most folks. But I, I certainly, at least at our clinic, I, I just don't see the value of turning someone away if they, if they made an effort to get it and they have an appointment, we'll make sure they get the vaccine.
Thank you.
Other questions for Erin?
Uh, Erin, if we say the vaccine passport comes to be, and right now you're not seeing a whole bunch of people, I mean, you, you're, it's tailing off, you know, and, and how many people are signing up. But if you're, you want to get on an airplane and you're gonna need it, and so now we're looking at pushing to seventy-five, eighty percent probably of the population, how many people could we do in a day if we had to?
In this county or in my clinic? Um, I think KVH, uh, the most they did in one day was four hundred and ninety-three-ish. We're right about two hundred. I think Skyline's two hundred, two fifty. North Shore's in the one hundred to two hundred range. So, I, I mean, we, we can get people, yeah, so there's not. Um, and, and we won't, I doubt we'll see those numbers in those days again unless there's a booster in the fall or booster dose required in the fall.
Right.
But, yeah. I have not officially seen anything, but I'm absolutely planning that that's gonna be part of our life because I, I don't want to be unprepared in the fall when that, it is potentially a thing.
Program you're gonna have will make that a lot easier.
Yes, oh, absolutely. So we have, we have a lot of infrastructure set in place so that if that comes to pass in the fall, for sure, then we're, we're absolutely ready.
And then can you also use this new program for your flu vaccine shots and everything else and getting that all set up?
I was told yes. But I, I've been so focused on getting the COVID part of it set up, like, I, and that was part of the sales call. That was the thing that I asked that we could have that capability. They said that was a possibility. And then it's just been just focused on getting that COVID part because that's obviously my life right now.
Erin?
Yes.
Erin, can you hear me?
Yes, Paul.
Uh, yes, I had a follow-up to Commissioner Christopher's question. I believe last week Governor Inslee announced a change from one to both metrics not being met in order to be moved back from phase three. I think that was a recent, a recent change. Originally, it was one, one or the other metric not being met. I believe it's both metrics currently are needed to be moved back in phases.
Yes, that's correct, Paul. They, I think he announced that, if I remember correctly, on Thursday of last week. So we'd have to have three, we'd have to have three hospitalizations and over a hundred cases in fourteen days. Three hospitalizations over seven days and over a hundred cases in fourteen days to get sent back to phase two. So I, I think that'll set us up pretty well. There have absolutely been fourteen-day periods where we've had a hundred to a hundred and seventy-five cases, but they're few and far between.
Yeah.
Um, so as long as people just really kind of hang in there for a while longer, I, I think.
And as far as the three hospitalizations go, do they have to be hospitalized in our hospitals in our county?
Nope.
Or can they be in Portland and they're still accredited those?
So occasionally what happens is I find out, we find out about hospitalizations after the fact because the Oregon hospitals, maybe they're in a Portland hospital, they'll still report the data to DOH, but we might not find out about it until later, so that doesn't happen very often. Typically, people will go through our hospital systems, so we'll have that information. Yeah, but if you just check yourself in in Portland, um, there, there could be a delay and they could come back and say you have three hospitalizations that I potentially may not know about. It doesn't happen very often, but that is.
Well, right now, we're good because.
On your pri, primary residential address, correct?
Yes.
You could, you could be staying in Portland, but your primary residence could be here, but you're still gonna get.
We're gonna get charged. Yeah, you could have caught COVID in Portland, yeah, you're still gonna get clipped here.
I think most of the time our data, as far as, you know, is pretty good, but we, we've had that happen a couple of times where they're like, oh, no, you've had a hospitalization. We're like, no, I actually haven't, so. And then just getting that corrected at the state level, but, um, as long as, as long as cases stay low post-spring break, I think we'll be set on May third to stay in phase three.
Good. Okay, any other questions or comments for Erin? Okay, not seeing anything. Does that conclude your?
That concludes.
Okay.
That's what I.
Well, that moves us a little ahead of schedule for public access to the board, so this would be an opportunity for the public that are either, they could actually be here in person. We do have one member that, we actually have a, I don't think she's here as a member of the public, but you could, if you had a comment to make. No comment from there, or then, uh, online, we have lots of folks. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment to the Board of Health? This is, this is your opportunity. If you do, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. Identify your, please give us your name and where you're from. Not seeing any, I, you, uh, go ahead, Ms. Quinn.
I was just wondering if any other of our providers.
That's what I was getting to.
Or public servants, any, would like to, um, offer anything up about what's going on in their corner?
Yes.
But, sure, this is Rob at Skyline. And really not a lot to add from what Erin said. Uh, you know, we, we feel that we have an adequate supply of vaccine now. Uh, we're doing mostly all Moderna, but we do have some Johnson and Johnson that, that we never administered any of it, but we're, we're still hanging on to that. And, uh, and we're, we're just not seeing as much interest in vaccine, not as many phone calls to, to get scheduled as we would like to see. But, you know, we're, we're ready and prepared and continuing with our, our vaccination clinics. Well, that's, uh, Skyline's update.
Thank you. Cindy, I see you're on. Any, any updates you'd like to provide from North Shore?
Hi, yeah, Cindy. Um, I wanted to say first that we continue to really appreciate working with the, our Health Department. They are just fantastic to work with in every way, um, so we feel really lucky to work with them. Similar to what Rob and Erin said, um, we continue to have demand, but it's not at the overwhelming level, which is actually a little bit nicer for now. We have evening and Saturday sessions, and all of our sessions are bilingual, so trying to make it so that people have lots of different options about where to go. Interestingly, we still, even though the, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine is on hold right now, we still have lots of interest in it. So, um, we're looking forward to that coming back online. For whatever reason, that's, that's a vaccine that, that, um, some folks have really zeroed in on being the one that they feel comfortable with, um, so that's great. And then one other thing to add about hospitalizations, just wanted to point out that that is probably, um, helped being kept down by our hospitals offering the monoclonal antibody treatment, which is, um, staff-intensive and difficult for them to do. So I just want to say thank you to them for that, that that is really helpful for all of us, obviously.
Great. Thanks, Cindy. I don't see Leslie, but maybe you're on a number I don't recognize. KVH?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
Hey.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I'll just echo, uh, what Cindy and Rob have said. We're still, I mean, we still are scheduling, and I, I have to say, uh, folks prefer the fairgrounds, so we're very thankful that we have the facility out here to, to run through, and, um, it's been going well. We're hoping that, um, you know, maybe even as early as the end of May, we can be done out here because I know that there's activities that, that really start to get going, um, and that the, the grounds get used for other things. So we appreciate the use of the grounds and so does the, like, the county, where, you know, we do get folks from all over the county, and it's been, uh, a, a great facility to use. So, you know, we're, you know, getting, um, working more into evenings and weekends where people, you know, we're getting to this tier of working people that really just can't come during the day. So we're, you know, thankfully, um, you know, we have more daylight hours, and so we'll, we'll be doing more evening clinics.
Okay, thanks, Leslie. And, and I will just say for myself, I have heard, actually to all the providers in the Health Department, I have, I have heard nothing but praise for all of the different clinics that, it's like every one of them, I've never heard one negative thing. It's all positive as far as the, the efficiency and just the professionalism of everybody and, and how, how quick people get in and out through the process. So that's, I, I mean, I, I just really do think, again, that this is a, is a, it needs to be said that, you know, we, this, this county, the folks in this county really stepped up and, you know, we, we handled this. We figured out what we needed to do, and we're doing it, and that, and I love the coordination that's going on between the providers and the Health Department. If you had said that a couple of years ago, um, I, I know that, uh, wouldn't have been the truth. I know everybody knew each other, but they knew each other by other names, and I'll leave it at that, so. Okay, thank you. Eddie, we're still in public comment. That was my public comment. I'm not seeing anybody. Is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up for the good of the order, I guess I'd call it? Not seeing any. If we've got no more business before the Board of Health, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Anderson and a second from Commissioner Christopher to adjourn. Any discussion? Not allowing any, all those in favor, say hi.
All right.
Hi.
Hi, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, folks.